eBooks, graphic novels. And we're also going to be, soon to be circulating kits for children with disabilities, for the zero to five age group that have manipulatives, books appropriate to different developmental levels to teach certain life skills. So there's lots of non-traditional items you can get, and there's always staff willing to help you with whatever you need.
So with the classes you give, a lot of these things can be checked out on the Millbrae Library website. Some of the musical programs that you've had for the public have just been spectacular. So compliments to the entire staff, but we're not understating it when we say the Millbrae Library is one of the most used libraries in the entire district and region, and we are very, very proud of that.
Me too, and it's, everything's free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Williams, we have agenda overview.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, interim city manager. To bring to your note and to the publics, we have the Millbrae Holiday Tree Lighting Celebration. It starts this Saturday. The Millbrae Chamber of Commerce and the City of Millbrae will host the 27th Annual Holiday Tree Lighting Celebration. The event will start sharply at 5:00 PM out in front of City Hall. And in addition to tree lighting, there will be caroling, hot chocolate, and cookies served. And for those who decide to attend, please consider bringing an unwrapped new toy for the Central County Fire Toy Drive. A toy donation is not necessary to attend, and we hope to see everyone there. Again, it is the 27th Annual Holiday Tree Lighting, 5:00 PM this Saturday, December 1st, out in front of City Hall. Also, the Caltrain Holiday Train will fire up its engines for the seventh year this weekend, and that will delight Bay Area families with glittering lights and holiday giving. The festive tradition begins with holiday treats, entertainment, and characters, including Frosty the Snowman, Rudolph, and Santa's Elves. The Holiday Train will be in Millbrae at the Caltrain Station going southbound, so the southbound train, so the parking lot off of El Camino, you don't have to go into the BART parking lot, at 5:20 PM, December 2nd, so that's Sunday, December 2nd, at 5:20 PM. Also, there's a new 911 text for help for anybody that lives in San Mateo County. Anybody can request emergency assistance or notify first responders of emergencies by texting the emergency information line 911 on your cellphone. The new technology allows people who need emergency assistance but are not in a position to speak to request help from 911. When using the system, dispatchers suggest that the following guidelines are used when possible. One, provide the exact location of the emergency. Two, be concise in telling dispatchers what the emergency is. And three, do not use abbreviations, emojis, or slang. So the calling is still the preferred way of requesting emergency help or notifying first responders of emergency. People should only use text 911 when they are unable to speak. Then we have the holiday season safety. I wanted to bring to everyone's attention car burglaries. As many people go out shopping this holiday season, we want to remind them that car burglaries tend to spike during this time of year, and to keep their valuables out of sight by putting purses and bags in the trunk. Also, be sure to lock and check the locks on your car doors when you leave. And thieves tend to go out after, or thieves tend to go after unlocked vehicles as they are easy to steal from without drawing attention to themselves. And I would also, we have some very good news I think the council is aware of. I wanted to invite Kealan, our Public Works Director, up to give you a briefing on the closure of the consent decree and provide some information to the council and the community. And while he's up, I would like to take this time to really thank not only Public Works staff for doing a great job on doing things to improve the community with the upgrade of the tree lights on Broadway and obviously the relocation of the kiosk and other thing, but the entire city staff has really stepped up and they're doing a nice job. So I'd like to just thank all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor Lee, and member of the City Council, Kealan, Public Works Director. Actually, one thing I want to mention about what Elizabeth Carr just mentioned, we also have assisted hearing devices at the library that people can check out and use if you need help with that. So anyway, we have some good news. We received a letter from Bay Keepers, San Francisco Bay Keeper, on November 16, telling us that they are terminating the consent decree and commanding us for work well done. And I'd also like to highlight some of the achievement we have done in the last eight years, or since 2010. We had replaced about 10 miles of mainline in our city, of which six of those miles were actually done in the last 24 months. So I'd like to thank the council, city manager, especially the City Attorney's Office on the help that we received from all of you, getting the rate increase in 2015, supporting us on the sewer modernization program, and we have achieved this accomplishment today, which is a big thing for us. And we have also issued a press release, and hopefully the mayor can highlight some of that. And also, there is a letter that we included in our Friday report. I can recirculate that if you'd like. And those are the letter from the Bay Keeper. And with that, I want to give a shout out to a few people in Public Works. They have worked really, really hard. Our superintendent, Craig Centers, unfortunately, he is on vacation this week. And also, the sewer supervisor, Mike Kiligrew, our lead worker, Chris Jr. And also, our two engineers that put the sewer modernization program together. They are Jane Cow, who is on maternity leave until early next year, and also Andrew Young, who cannot attend the meeting tonight, unfortunately. I excuse Mike Kiligrew having to come to the meeting tonight because we are preparing for storm, and we want to be storm ready. I don't want to overwork him. He might get a call tonight at 3:00 o'clock in the morning, had to respond. So anyway, those are some of the good news that I'd like to share with the council and also the public. And then with that, I'd like to just show you a little quick video clip. Can I get some help?
So Mike Kiligrew is here via video.
Oh, he is. He is here.
Great. Ready?
Yes. My name is Michael Kiligrew, Public Works Supervisor for the City of Millbrae. I supervise our storm system and our sanitary sewer system. Today, we are in the 800 block of Porton Way. We are replacing the lower sewer lateral for this house here behind us. We have identified it as having a broken pipe, so we have come out here today to replace it before it causes a sanitary sewer overflow. Millbrae's wastewater system is approximately 70 years old. We have a lot of cracks. We have a lot of broken pipe. Trees, cracks, and broken pipe, groundwater, and tree roots have been able to tap into our sanitary sewer system. During the winter months, we have a lot of rainwater. This rainwater is leaking into our sanitary sewer system through illegal roof leaders, through illegal yard drains, and it's infiltrating into our sanitary sewer system and overwhelming it during the winter months. Our sanitary sewer system is a means of conveying wastewater from people's homes, people's businesses, hotels, to our wastewater treatment plant, which is located at the end of Millbrae Avenue by Old Bay Shore. The Bay Keeper Consent Decree is a court order that requires Millbrae to reduce its sanitary sewer overflows to no more than three a year. The community should hear about the consent decree so that our wastewater collection system can have sufficient capacity to convey wastewater to our treatment plant during all of the months of the year, especially during intimate weather and wet weather events. One of the obligations in the consent decree is to reduce the amount of infiltration into our sanitary sewer system by reducing the amount of infiltration from rainwater and groundwater into our collection system. The best, most effective solution to reducing our sanitary sewer overflows and the Bay Keeper compliance is a comprehensive rehabilitation of our identified priority sewer basins. This means repairing both the public mains and the private laterals. Compliance can be achieved by rehabilitating public sewers only in more basins, but it would be considerably more expensive. We have identified the Madrone Basin as one of the areas that needs to be rehabilitated. A lot of the homes were built in the 1930s and the 1940s. A lot of these homes were constructed using clay pipe. Also, Madrone Basins 1, 2, and 3, there is a sanitary sewer lift station that serves the Madrone Basins. Typically, on a normal summer day like today, that pump station, we pump approximately 400,000 gallons of wastewater a day. During intimate weather, where we have thunderstorms and a lot of rain that lasts for an extended period of time, that pump station is pumping approximately 2 million gallons of water a day. So 400,000 gallons of wastewater, 1.5 million gallons of rainwater. It will take approximately two years to address the priority basins. So after the priority basins are addressed, the city will continue with the upper lateral and our mains in the streets, rehabilitating them, but it will be at a slower pace. One sewer lateral, like what we are doing here in the background, takes approximately two days from the time we start. We typically start 7:30 in the morning, finish at 3:30. We're typically in and out in two days. If we are replacing the whole sanitary sewer main that is on the street in front of people's homes, we will not only be replacing the sanitary sewer main, but the sewer laterals that are connected, and that would take about one week. Typical flow patterns can be disrupted for about one hour while the contractor disconnects and reconnects their sanitary sewer lateral. Contractor, our efforts ourselves, will probably knock on your door and ask you not to run water for about one hour. Some other inconveniences might be traffic control. Just if you work with the contractor, he'll be able to move his equipment out of the way so you can get in and out of your driveway. Streets might be closed to true traffic, might be some detour shut up. But if we're working in front of your house, you will be able to access your driveway. The city will probably be in compliance, most likely, but we are planning to continue to measure flows this next winter, probably the next winter after that, to see how much we have reduced our infiltration of rainwater into our sanitary sewer system. Thank you, Millbrae residents, for your patience while we complete this important work.
One last thing I want to say is that I want to acknowledge Transuna Hara being a production manager of this four-minute video clip, and also MCTV for actually using your very first 4K video camera to shoot that video. That was, I believe, last year.
This is, this is great.
Thank you.
Let's make sure this is up on the website.
It is.
So people are aware, the increased sewer rates, this is the result. We are making great headway in bringing our system, our 70-year-old system, up to date. We were at 101 overflows, and then last year, we're down to nine.
This year, we went down from 101 SSO to nine. So that is a 90% improvement over the last eight years. So it is a big undertaking.
It's great. Compliments to all the staff and all the great work, and the video is wonderful. So definitely, let's get that up there and out. And it really describes well what city staff have to go through in order to make this a reality. Sadly, Millbrae was one of many cities in the Bay Area that was taken to court by the Bay Keepers in this lawsuit. Being done with it really benefits the city because we have focused more so on our infrastructure and the fixing, and now we are without the legal fees.
All right.
So we can focus all the funding on continuing to improve the system and being good stewards to the bay and the environment as a whole. So we are very proud of the city staff and everyone being out of the consent decree, which is something we will hopefully never, ever see again. The issue is always, every city self-reports when we have an overflow. Now we hopefully are being proactive that we will enter into our own consent decrees without bringing in any legal counsel from the Bay Keepers. So we can take care of business, and that's what we've wanted to do all along, is really improve our infrastructure so that we don't have these. So very proud of everyone here and the residents as well. Thank you for working with us. I know it's always painful when fees are raised, but it's going to work here and really getting a positive result. So thank you, everyone. We greatly appreciate all of that.
Thank you, Mayor, and member of the City Council.
And I'd also like to thank Joan and Hanson Bridget because I know they've done a lot of work through this as well. So, thank you. Okay, Mayor, so the agenda, again, the overview this evening, calendar of events that's placed in your council packet, and that is also online. Reports of bills and claims, and then report out from closed session on November 13, 2018. Item number three is approval of the meeting minutes, the regular meeting of November 13, 2018. Item number four, there are no oral reports from city committees or commission chairs this evening. And then there's public communication, followed by the consent calendar. Item number five on the consent agenda is to approve by motion the quarterly investment schedule for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018-19. Item number six is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager designated to execute agreements with HB Consulting Group for project management support services for the transit-oriented development projects in the amount not to exceed $125,000. Item number seven is adoption of a resolution approving the tentative agreements for successor memorandums of understanding with the Teamsters Local 856 Miscellaneous Unit, Teamsters Local 856 Sanitation Unit, and the salary and benefit modifications for unrepresented management for the term of July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. Also establishing a salary range for part-time, temporary, and seasonal classifications and compliance with the California State Minimum Wage Law, and adopting our revised salary schedule effective August 26, 2018, and amending the City of Millbrae Position Control Table for fiscal year 2018-19. Item number eight is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to execute an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group for the preparation of a cost allocation plan, comprehensive fee study, master fee schedule, and revenue enhancement study in the amount not to exceed $82,500, with a project contingency of $17,500 for a total contract authorization not to exceed $100,000. Item number nine is an informational report for the 2018-19 mayor/vice mayor rotation. Item number 10 is a resolution accepting the 2017 sewer modernization program, the Madrone Sub Basin 1 and 2 Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement Program project as complete, and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion. Item number 11 is a resolution awarding a construction contract to C2R Engineering in the amount of $827,650 for the sanitary sewer and lower lateral for as-needed repair and replacement, and establishing a project contingency of $124,000, and authorizing the city manager or designated to execute the construction contract and all contract change orders up to the project contingency amount of $124,000. Item 12, the last item on the consent calendar, is to adopt a resolution approving revisions of the City of Millbrae investment policy. There are no public hearings this evening. Under existing business, item 13 is an overview and update of the Recreation Center Restoration Project. This is an informational item. Item number 14 under new business is to adopt a resolution appointing Thomas C. Williams as City of Millbrae City Manager and approving the employee agreement. That is the last item on the agenda that would then be followed by council comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay. We have then approval of the minutes.
A report out?
Oh, sorry, report out.
Closed session will be quick?
Yes.
So on November 13, 2018, the council held two closed sessions. One pertained to real property negotiations regarding a transaction between BART and the City of Millbrae related to a strip of property adjacent to the Millbrae Gateway Project at the BART intermodal station. The other closed session had to do with personnel. It was an evaluation and consideration of an appointment of your interim city manager to permanent city manager. No action was taken as a result of either closed sessions, but the discussion regarding your city manager is on the agenda tonight under item now 14 under new business. Is that right?
Yes.
So what was discussed is now in the form of an action before the council, an open session under new business. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor Lee?
Counselwoman Snyder, did you have a?
Before it got too late, I just wanted to mention that this Saturday, unless John Muniz is going to bring this up during public speaking, the Millbrae Historical Society also has a children's event at the museum. And to wait for council comments when everybody's gone to bed, just, I believe it's...
I think that comes up in public comment.
But Tom talked about the tree lighting, but there's also that activity.
So I think we're going to get there. Okay.
So I do have a comment about the minutes, and I will motion approve. But for our last meeting, I think there was an agreement to look into assuming a lower discount rate, in effect, to hedge ourselves and give us a head start on OPEPs. And I think the council was in agreement with that approach.
I believe so, too. Is that not in the?
Yeah, it's not in the minutes, no.
Can we add that into the regular meeting minutes of November 13, please? Okay. If we were to add those, I'm sorry. So, yes, approval of minutes of November 13, 2018. We have a motion by Mr. Lee with the amendment added, please. Second by Ms. Oliva. Your votes, please.
The minutes were approved unanimously with the revision by Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you. No oral reports, moving on to public communication. The time when the public can comment on items not on the agenda, three minutes are allotted. Oh, here they are. Excuse me. Thank you very much. We have two speaker slips. Welcome, Mr. Lopez.
Hello, everybody. Hello, City Council. Rafael Lopez, 485 Lincoln Circle. This is a bunch of, series of questions, so I hope you could type fast. I nominate Ann as the next vice mayor or mayor. Why are there no lights on the baseball side of Richmond Drive? Why are there broken button, why is there a broken button to cross from Richmond to Geraldine? Why is there only one stripe?
Broken button, meaning?
Say that again?
Broken button, what type of?
So there's a, there's a button you push to cross from Richmond to Geraldine. From the baseball side, the button doesn't work, but on the Geraldine side, the button does work. And I sent an email into Public Works, I believe, to take care of that. So why is there only one stripe on Magnolia and Library when there should be two stripes to cross the street right here in this very corner? Why are cars making illegal left turns out of the Kohl's parking lot onto Magnolia? Do we own the parking lot? Can we paint a right turn sign on the floor instead of a straight one? What's going on with the new rec center since the vote? Are there any new news? How much, at this point, has the city lost in money? I hope we can learn from this. Has the city been contacted by Lime or Bird? Have we written up any kind of permits where the city can make money? Better to do it now before we build a new housing by BART. Can we reach out to BART and Caltrain to keep the benches and the stops cleaner? There, right now, there's drug paraphernalia and poop at the stations right now. Can you talk to the sheriff and arrange for them to come out and enforce parking around here more often, especially at the community center parking lot and Richmond Drive? People have literally been parking in the same spot for months. Yes. Months. Have we contacted the new housing people and get them to hire a 24-hour security guard? Why were there traffic study monitors and equipment on Richmond Drive and Lincoln Circle in March of this year? And I hear Burning Game is going to do construction about the same time that we're going to be doing construction. Both of our cities are building new housing. How is this going to affect traffic on 101 and El Camino? And when the new housing is being built, can you ask them to build it during the graveyard shift only? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Just as in FYI, we don't own the parking lot there for where Living Spaces is, and that portion of Broadway also belongs to the property owner, not the city.
Vice Mayor Lee? And Mr. Lopez, if, do we have your contact information so we can get back to you? Is that all there? Okay, good, all right. Thank you.
Next speaker. It is on item nine, which is a consent item. Mr. Sandrini.
Yeah, but some consent, so. Mayor and council members, the only way you can correct your reprehensible act of violating the council rotation protocol last year is to seat Ann Schneider as mayor this year. Short of that, you can mitigate your misdeed by seating her as vice mayor and then following the protocol. Why? The council report statement that the protocols are a guide and not a mandate regarding the mayor and vice mayor rotation and the process is that the sole discretion and pleasure of a majority of the city council is in fact false. Including it as a basis for not following the protocol is a staff error that crosses the line between city administration and politics. I asked the city manager to provide me a protocol definition or basis for the statement. He has not, none exists. So I suggested he remove the statement from the report and provide a rotation lineup proposal as required by the protocol that proposes Lee as mayor and Schneider as vice mayor. The 1998 protocol adoption and 2015 revisions did nothing to allow council to not follow the protocol. The protocol deduction that says the rules do not limit the inherent power and general legal authority of the council relates only to the conduct of meetings. It has nothing to do with permitting council to violate the protocol. The staff report was due in October. It fails to advise council as to who is in the line to serve for mayor and vice mayor as required by the protocol. This staff report is faulty. The protocol addresses discussion and confirmation of the proposed rotation. It says nothing about allowing rotation changes or any election. Nowhere is the election of mayor or vice mayor prescribed, suggested, or allowed in any city document. Election thing we have used is strictly ceremonial. The electorate votes, expecting mayors and vice mayors will be installed pursuant to the pro-con, protocol. They, the electorate, are disenfranchised if the protocol is not followed, a gross public trust violation. The protocol was wisely set up for the pre-election October staff rotation advice and confirmation when candidates are not yet known, but the election results not available. This avoids the kind of rotation shenanigans we experienced last year. It provides for an objective rotation confirmation before election results that some council members may not like. If council can simply ignore the rotation protocol, does that mean it can do the same for any other protocols? No. Protocols can be changed only by a transparent public policy procedure, properly noticed and heard. Trust in the city council has deteriorated considerably the past few years.
Time is up.
Because of things such as not holding the city manager accountable for obvious poor management, wasting money painting streets, and other frivolous items. A lack of trust that I and many others have talked attributed to the defeat of the Recreation Centering funding measure. Thank you.
We will move on now to the consent calendar.
I'm confused. If a public member is speaking on an issue, doesn't that pull it off consent calendar?
Only the council pulls things off consent.
Pulling this issue off consent calendar.
Okay. That would be item nine. I'd like to pull items six and eight. Any other items? Okay, so we have a request to pull items six, seven, I mean, six, eight, and nine of the consent calendar. The remaining items, we have a motion for item five, seven, 10, 11, and 12, and a second. Your votes on the remaining items, please.
Consent items number five, seven, 10, 11, and 12 pass unanimously.
In order, item six, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager designated to execute agreement with HB Consulting Group for project management... with HB Consulting Group for project management support services for transit-oriented development projects in the amount not to exceed $125,000. I specifically pulled this item because this deals with TOD 1 and 2, given the, excuse me, the statement of qualifications of this group. I didn't see any experience or projects that related to transit-oriented developments. So my question is, do we have a representative from this group present and always interested in the significance of this project as a whole? Hello?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Harry Burrows, I'm the President of HB Consulting Group.
Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions, specific questions that you have.
Yes, well, this is the biggest projects we have in Millbrae, but in the past, we've had consulting firms in various aspects on these projects. The city of Millbrae, I think, has been underevaluated or appraised as far as the significance of our station area. So we, or I in particular, would like some assurances that we're not going to be treated like any other transit-oriented development, because we're not. This station is significant in that it is the largest intramodal center west of the Mississippi. There are no other transit-oriented developments that connect to a major regional airport. So in your process here, we do believe in our soon-to-be city manager and the work that he has done, but what we'd be looking for in a contract with you is that there is significant work done in making sure Millbrae just isn't settling for what other transit-oriented developments are out there. We are significantly different, as Mr. Lopez acknowledged, too. There's developments going on all around here. We need assurances that when you are managing these projects, there is a standard that will be acceptable to the city of Millbrae and the speciality of our city, the needs of the city, and the significance of this project. So those are the things that I would be looking for in anyone who comes on board here, the willingness to exceed what's in your existing resume here, and really seeking out the special knowledge and experience that this, these projects, I think, require.
Right, fully, fully understood, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to give you a little bit more background on my experience, you know, I've got over 30 years working what I call both sides of the counter. I've worked on behalf of cities and behalf of developers on many major projects, not listed in the statement of qualifications, it's in your package. The most recent transit-oriented development that I worked on was with the city of Pittsburgh, their Civic Center redevelopment project right at the new BART station that was, E-BART station that was constructed, that's the diesel BART extension from Pittsburgh out to Antioch. New station went in there and I assisted the city as part of their master planning activities for the Civic Center redevelopment project there. Also, just sort of an overarching experience, I've worked on many large projects on behalf, mostly on behalf of cities, large, complicated, multi-year master plan projects, many of them urban infill projects. So I'm very familiar with the issues that cities and developers face on those, and I see my role in this project as the city's done a tremendous amount of work way before I've come on board or will come on board, hopefully. And, you know, my job is to help get these projects across the finish line and hopefully into construction, and my primary responsibilities are to make sure that the city's interests are looked after, that, you know, the obligations of the developers through, that are part of their entitlements to date, and their development agreements that I know one has been executed and the others shortly to be executed, to make sure that those obligations are withheld and upheld.
Okay, so a really important aspect of this project is that 500 parking spaces will be removed from the station area. The traffic already is an F on Millbrae Avenue and El Camino, so ensuring that there is no greater impact on the community as a whole or the commuters that are going in and out of there is going to be an enormous job that is going to be vitally important to all of us as residents of Millbrae and anybody who comes in and out of that station. So you're going to have to be pretty tough on that front, just ensuring that the disruption as is, is not overly burdensome to our residents, because we suspect that there will be encroachment on the residents around the station area, traffic coming in and out of there, as well as the impact on the infrastructure. So as the consultant or the person overseeing this, we really need to make sure that the city's concerns include all of those. We have past traffic reports, we're working on a, what is it, transit study right now. The shuttles also need to come in and out of there, so this is a very significant job that's really requires a lot of experience, which you seem to have here, but these are the specifics that we're going to be looking at. This is very important to all of us. It's not just a matter of getting things across the finish line, but it's also making sure that the city is protected throughout the entire process. So that's what we'll be looking for. Ms. Schneider?
Interim City Manager Williams, we've got the pending active transportation plan, and I'm not sure if it's going to include a lot of what's happening at Rollins Road and Millbrae Avenue, but as I've been telling my peers and other city councils, most of the, a good percentage of the traffic going in and out of the BART station on both sides are people from other cities. And when that, that parking goes away, those people need to get to our BART station in a different way, and I don't know if that's within the scope of your work, because you're working specifically with the developers. It would be our ATP, the Active Transportation Plan, that's going to reach out to the various transportation agencies, saying that they need to work with us on a plan to get people who are single car or carpooling in but leaving a car, that there won't be the parking there. And that should reduce some of the flow of traffic on Millbrae Avenue and Rollins Road. And I, we've been waiting for the active transportation plan for a while. I would imagine you'll have some feedback into that. We're not the only city that has taken away a parking lot at a BART station, so there should be some things that we can learn, but we really do need to make sure that that's in the ATP and that the city's as far away as San Jose, because I have friends from San Jose who drive to Millbrae to take BART, and that they can't do that. It's going to be different when we break ground. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lee?
I think the other consideration, too, is that for future planning purposes, I'm not, I'm not, according to staff analysis, that we may, may not break even economically on all the growth, so that means that the citizens and taxpayers of the city has to make up the difference. So I like to plan for that. I know the property taxes aren't going to cover our costs. I know that with the hotel, we might barely break through, but the lack of commercial space definitely is going to cause, is, you know, that's our best chance to, to offset the cost of, and we're not against housing, we're all for housing, but we also want to make sure it's a balanced approach where these people don't end up living in slums and they don't have the services that they deserve. So I want to make sure that we also pay attention to the economic analysis. Thank you.
Well, the impact on traffic is really going to be, how are we going to determine who the commuters are and who the construction workers are? Because I think we need to have more control over the construction people that are coming in, because the commuters should not be the ones negatively impacted by the construction. So what experience do you have in that sense in working with developers as construction goes in, going on, to getting their workers on public transportation instead of driving to the station, taking up parking spaces that really are dedicated solely to commuters at this point in time? I know, I've heard rumors that the construction company wants, you know, an additional 200 parking spaces, that's just not acceptable in any way, shape, or form during any kind of construction here. The obligation is that that's a transit center, it needs to be used as such, so the shuttles need to get in and out. If people are being dropped off, they need to get in and out, and the nightmare is really going to be when construction happens, the construction workers that come in, the vehicles that are going to be tying up the intersection, the big construction vehicles. So these are the kind of things that we need assurances on if you're coming in as this kind of project manager, how you're going to oversee those kind of things to ensure that the disruption is not such that the commuter aspect of that station is interfered with more so than ever before.
Well, I, I know that one of the obligations of the TOD 2 project is for them to prepare a traffic management plan, and that traffic management plan will include looking at the impacts of construction traffic, and so I will be working with public work staff as well as a developer to make sure that the traffic management plan that they come up with is both realistic and can be managed correctly so that we can address those items that you're discussing.
So in traffic management plans you've worked for in the past, has they included the construction workers as part of that plan?
Yes, both, both the construction workers themselves in terms of identifying locations where they're going to park during construction, how they shuttle in and out, you know, many projects like this, you have a designated separate, the developer comes up with a designated separate parking area for their workers and they bring, they shuttle their workers in and out. So it's all of those different aspects that will be a part of that traffic management analysis.
That would be, that would be great, yes.
Mayor, I would just like to comment that, you know, we, I know that there's no way that we can eliminate 200 parking spaces during construction at the BART station.
That was not part of the deal, so that's off the table, period.
So, so we need to keep those parking spaces open, absolutely, so, and I clearly understand that, we'll work with.
So the oversight is going to be exceptionally important in a project manager coming in and overseeing these projects. In addition to that, there will be an increase in SFO arrivals. Thankfully, my really loud and obnoxious voice, BART is going to be working with SFO so that the regular connection to the airport, starting in February of next year, occurs regularly on the half hour in and out of SFO. So that alone will bring in more people to our station area. They're the kind of people that will be looking to hopefully just get on BART or Caltrain to go to other areas, but we assume they will also pick up some of the 40,000 SFO workers coming in and trying to get to work as well. So there's going to be an influx there. BART tends to be a little hindsight, you know, we should have looked at this, they're going through growing pains in Antioch right now where they didn't have enough parking spaces, and so we suspect this is going to be a similar crisis. Are you ready for something like that?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we're looking for a very strong hand to make sure that everything that agreed to happens and we can lessen the impact on the community around the developments, so.
And, and my job as a project manager isn't to have all the answers, but it's to bring all the pieces together and the proper components to get to the right answers that you're asking.
Oh, and that's what I'm trying to suggest here, we are very unique, so you may have to look to things in, throughout the world and how they've dealt with that, because this is very significant and very important to not only the city of Millbrae but the region. So your willingness to do something like that is great, we look forward to that. I'm sure there's new and wonderful ideas out there that could be helpful in this process. It's just the same old thing, probably won't work, and we are going to have, have to look outside the box and really make this happen. Okay? Vice Mayor Lee?
And not to add any more pressure, I'm going to add more pressure. But.
Price just went up, right?
But, but the nation, the nation transportation is looking at our project, and I've interviewed them, they interviewed me when I was mayor about the impacts and the potential for intermodal site dislodge, integrating not only housing but a good commercial base and creating a livelihood where people would eat and, I mean, would lodge and also work in nearby's transit center, so eyes are on us.
Okay, all right, we have a motion by Ms. Schneider, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Hallibur.
Just one quick comment, just sort of an announcement, this consultant actually is a family member of mine through marriage, so.
You look familiar.
So because of that, I, and I talked to Joan before, our legal counsel, before the meeting, and while there's no legal requirement, no legal conflict of interest, I will be recusing myself from, from this vote, but welcome aboard.
My decision. Okay. Your votes, please.
Item number six passed with a vote of 401 with Councilmember Hallibur abstaining.
Mr. Burrows, we wish you all the best. Thank you very much. Item number eight.
So Mayor, before we introduce Deanna, I would just like to bring to your attention that we do have at the dais a, a timeline for the completion of work, so I'm going to bring that to your attention.
Where was that? The reason I pulled this item is because there was no timeline attached to it. This is a very detailed metrics that I'm looking at right now, which is good to know. For the public's information, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager designate, do I have the right one? Yes. Designate to execute an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group for the preparation of a cost allocation plan, comprehensive fee study, master fee schedule, and revenue enhancement study in the amount not to exceed $82,500 with a project contingency of 17,000, 17,500 for a total contract authorization, authorization not to exceed $100,000. This is an exceptionally important measure that we are glad to see on the agenda. I think it will be important for Ms. Hillbrat to kind of go through this schedule with us, because the end result is really important to the city and our revenue as we move forward, so if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely, so this project has basically three components. The first is the cost allocation plan. This is a method of allocating what we'd call city overhead costs, so costs of departments that aren't necessarily producing revenue, that finance, administration, clerk, that type of thing. And, and that runs in parallel with the development of the master fee study. So the fee study will assist us in developing proper fees for services that are provided that can be allocated to a specific individual or group. So this might include building permit fees, engineering fees, some recreation fees, that type of thing. We'll also be looking at what could be referred to, referred to as tax subsidy policy or fee reductions. So for example, we may not recover 100% of cost for some fees. Recreation is the most typical example, but there may be other examples where we would not recover 100% of fees. So those are, it's two very key areas of this project. It's, it was a project actually budgeted, I think, in 2015, way before I, my arrival, but we've, we've kicked that off. We hope to actually accelerate this schedule, we've worked with the consultant to talk about how to do that, in the hopes of completing before the end of the fiscal year. Courtney Ramos from Matrix is here, if we wanted to ask her any questions. We'll be working with some of our commissions and committees as well, where, where it's feasible or where it makes sense to keep a, a good, good public engagement in this process. And the revenue enhancement study will look at all other ways that, including this one, that we could either better collect. that we could either better collect revenue we already have or just other revenue options that might be out there that we have not targeted at this point in time. So we're just, it's a very global look at revenue opportunities for the city.
What I don't see here, and received an email on recently, was the short-term rental. Is that a part of this proposal? And where are we on that project?
Short-term rentals is a separate project. So we recently, at the beginning of October, we sent out notices to all known operators. Muni Services, which is another firm the city works with, had identified through, it's almost an actual looking at Airbnb and other websites such as Home Key, VRBO, to identify operators who are operating short-term rentals. We had a list of about 40 unique rentals. We sent them all a letter, told them they needed to pay their past due TOT and business license tax, gave them a time period to respond. About 11 of them have responded. I'm doing this from memory, so I apologize, but about 11 responded. We've collected about $45,000. We referred that back to get some assistance from City Attorney. They're helping us develop some stronger letters for the next batch as there are still many of them operating who have not paid TOT. Only a couple have gone all the way through the permitting process because payment of back taxes is part of receiving their permit. So there's only a couple who've actually gotten fully permitted. But we've been working very closely, the finance team and the community development team, to get this kicked off the ground and work with our public.
Along those lines, we had written into the ordinance fees and penalties if there are 30, 40 people not pursuing that.
Yes, that's the next step that we're taking is notification of those that are not taking those steps.
And how soon will we be?
If I may, Mayor, I think, and Deanna, correct me if I'm wrong, the revenue we've collected to date includes penalties as well, correct?
Yeah, penalties and interest based on the time that those TOT taxes were due and business license taxes.
So from legal counsel, the next steps, when will you see full compliance?
Oh. We're working on it. It doesn't happen overnight. I think many of us in this world have received letters saying, oh, you owed this or you should have done that. And people don't necessarily jump for their checkbooks. And we anticipated that there would be some resistance and we will follow through and we will keep at it. This is code enforcement. And code enforcement is an art and you work at it and we will get there. I think that the finance and community development department have done a magnificent job getting started.
Thank you to the finance department. Vice Mayor Lee.
Yeah, my question is, so initially, when we started this program, were they just given, were they given a grace period or to come into compliance? Or we just hit them up with fines and interest?
Well, okay, I've gotten everybody off topic here and my apologies. I think we'll have to ask for an update on that.
Happy to do that.
Please agendize that. Yes, my apologies. I didn't see that on here. Excuse me, Vice Mayor. Ms. Schneider.
I, curious, is this going to also look at transient occupancy tax and business licenses? Because if you follow a lot of the business license changes in Silicon Valley, personally, I think one's gone a little scary by charging the new fee that just was approved by the voters of Mountain View, or Palo Alto, Mountain View, to charge employers based on employees to go into a housing fund. There's sort of a number of things that have been happening. Plus, if I remember correctly, Millbrae has a rather remarkable number of at-home businesses. I don't want to make life more difficult there, but business licenses, it seems like many cities are using fees that were established 30, 40 years ago. So if those two are also part of this package.
They will be included in that, what we're calling the revenue enhancement study. And what that will talk to is what that process looks like. So for example, to change our business license tax requires a public vote. I believe Daly City may have just done this recently. So, and there are pros and cons to any of those. So what we'd be coming back to with is a package of things to look at. There may be things we could adjust procedurally, for example, in the finance department to do X, Y, or Z differently that we would just, for example, notify you about that we've taken these steps. But there, I would expect a list of several options that could be policy decisions, they could be items that you would take to the public if that's what the council chose to do.
Okay. And then if I'm the developer bringing the Burger King project forward, does this cover that or is that going to be done as a separate study after we approve that specific plan? Because right now, it's my understanding that developers along El Camino that aren't part of the Millbrae station area are subject to real old developer fees.
So there's two components. There's a project of developer impact fees that was approved at your last meeting. We're kicking that off already. And there's a project of fees that will, so that's the impact fees. And then there's the master fees, which is permit fees, inspection fees.
These are fees for service and building permit. The one that you're referring to is, as Deanna mentioned, was capital.
Or the capital.
Yeah, two different.
Thank you.
Of course.
For clarification here on this matrix that you've presented here, are these going to be running simultaneously or we have to wait for one to get to the other one?
They will run simultaneously.
Oh, thank God.
Yeah. So the results of the cost allocation plan will feed into the master fee study, but there's a lot of work we can do at the same time to get them all done. And we anticipate doing everything we can to move this faster than the schedule also notes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hillbrant. This is wonderful, exciting. Thank you for all your hard work and effort on this. As you said, it was mentioned back in 2015 and we've all been waiting a very long time for this. So thank you so much for all your hard work and effort on this. We appreciate it and it looks like we're ready to take a vote.
Item number eight passed unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Ms. Schneider, item nine.
I want to thank the public who've been very supportive for the last year. It's not, this mayoral rotation thing is very emotional and I will not tell you how much pain it caused my family and pain that it's caused other members of the public. And I think it's distracted us from moving ahead with all the projects that the city has to do. So I'm not asking for anything tonight. I am going to publicly be announcing that I am pulling together a committee to look at making this a law, at potentially looking at a number of things based on what the public would like to consider. Because honestly, when I talk to other cities, I'm not the only one that's been passed over. This is not unique. I'm not the only one that's had things disappear from their mailbox at City Hall. That's not unique. I had a number of council members from all over, the county and Santa Clara, tell me their stories. But regardless of what's happened here or there, it's not good for Millbrae. It's not good for us moving forward. And what we need is to come together in Millbrae and work forward. We still don't have a rec set or plan. So we've got some big issues in front of us. But I will be putting that committee together and if you're interested, please private message me or email me to look at a signature collection and making this a law. And then we don't have to deal with this anymore. And it's not a function of personalities, it's a function of the votes of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. I think we can all agree that signs of disunity are deeply damaging to everyone. To answer Mr. Sandrini's comments, to invoke a protocol when there was a contested council race that could possibly change the dynamics of this city council would not have been respectful to those who are running or the voting public. So again, the protocols have been open for any suggested modifications all year. No member of the council has submitted any changes. So they exist as they are. The council acts on items as a majority vote. We hope that people will come together to some consensus as we move forward in taking a vote at the next meeting here. I think there's a misconception that there is never a given mandate when it comes to either position or an entitlement. We hope that working together, we can make a difference. As Ms. Schneider pointed out, we have a lot of important things that we have done this year. We hope to work together to continue to do. The recreation center was just one. We mentioned the temporary rental schedule that was invoked. The city has really made a lot of accomplishments and come together on a whole bunch of different issues, including what was Measure II. We look forward to working together here, hopefully building a consensus. If any council member is wishing to become the mayor or the vice mayor, building a consensus is key with all the colleagues. It has always been, you need a vote of the council and a majority vote of the council. So I encourage everyone, anyone who's interested in the positions to talk to their colleagues. We can't violate the Brown Act, so not regarding a specific vote, but really communicating with one another is key. We are here for the betterment of the residents in the city of Millbrae. We hear things on social media, things happen here. We are entrusted to vote our conscience for the betterment of the city. And trying to reach consensus in a respectful manner for each and every member of this council is so important. So with that, yes, Ms. Schneider?
I'm going to disagree with you. On May 5th of 2018, we had our goal-setting meeting and I was terribly surprised that an issue that I had put forward, which was bullying and harassment, which is pretty part and parcel for my three years on the city council, made it onto the city's goals. Now, at some point, it morphed into language in the city goals as looking at the city's protocol. And I have periodically brought it up through our former city manager and then the current city manager, but agreed to allow this to sit for the betterment of trying to pass Measure II. So it is not true to say that no council member has brought this forward and thinks that what happened in the last year was correct or proper or okay or in any way, in any way okay. So I'm going to disagree with you, Mayor, on your statement of saying that no council member brought this forward. Simply not true.
Again, I think we were clear here. This is, the agenda item is about the protocol. That's what we're talking about. Ms. Schneider, you can, as any council member here, suggest modifications to the protocol, which are always welcome to advance the city through the process. So that has clearly been communicated to everyone here. Civility and working together is key. The simple fact that people disagree on any vote or anything is not bullying. We are public representatives here. We will disagree on many things, but we try to come together and work together for the betterment of the city. That's what's before us right now. That's what we hope to achieve as we move forward for the city of Millbrae. So again, it has always been the case that a consensus vote is required to obtain either position. I encourage every member of this council, if they wish to proceed along those lines, to please do so. Okay, Ms. Schneider?
Okay, again, there's, it's perfectly okay to agree to disagree. And it's perfectly okay to not always vote on a 5-0. But what happened in November of last year and what was allowed to happen by a group at a number of council meetings targeting me, but it could have targeted any one of you, is simply not acceptable. It's going down a rabbit hole of bad behavior, which is destructive to Millbrae. So Mayor Pappan, I can hear you. I hear you're trying to take the high road, but I'm the one, I know exactly what happened to me. And I will encourage you and I will post what happened in November of last year, that horrendous, horrible, deplorable meeting and the behavior by my fellow four council members or at least three of you. So with that, I'm happy to let this go on and accept the protocol. To me, the protocol as written clearly states, waiting for the computer to catch up, and it's taking its time. "The rotation for mayor and vice mayor shall be determined by the number of votes a council member receives in his or her election or reelection in the," and that's the way it is. That's the way the public believes it. And you can, and the city has done so on several occasions, but it's not what is best for the city. At that, I'd like to see this move forward because we're just going to have to agree to disagree, Mayor. I disagree entirely with your approach and what you said. In my world, it's simply not true.
Once again, this is an informational item before the council, historically speaking. The protocol is a guide for the council. It is always required at each and every transition, a vote, a second, and a majority vote of the council, which is not spelled out in the protocol either, but given civil government law, that's what's required. So that's, as we proceed forward here, we are hoping that we can work as a group, try to come together in the best interests of the city to advance what we were elected to do, which is vote our conscience and make sure that the city progresses to the future. Okay, so this is an informational item. I don't believe we need a vote. It was on consent, but I think it.
Just an informational item.
Just an informational item. Okay. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We wanted to continue the regular monthly updates on the recreation center. I think the primary thing to report is there's some work to do in terms of revisiting. We do have a funding shortfall. The ballot measure, I think, has gotten to about 62.6%, but is not at the two-thirds majority required to pass. What we've done for now, there's a schedule in your staff report. We've updated that to reflect that we need to bring our advisory, I'm sorry, our restoration subcommittee back together. They'll come back together, brainstorm ideas, talk about what next steps might be, then bring the advisory committee back together and look back to that joint city council, parks, and rec commission meeting that I think was originally scheduled for December 4th, but we'll be moving that out into January, February timeline and continue to update the council and the public so that this continues to be an open process as we look at what's next. Some feedback that we've gotten was some lack of understanding about how funds are received and spent on the project. So we did want to, we did include information in the staff report, wanted to take a little bit more time to talk about it. So the city did receive a settlement for a new building of about $6.2 million. They've not received all of that in cash. A chunk of it will be received after the building is signed off for occupancy. But these are the funds to be used to build a new center. Some of those funds have been used in the design of the center and the demolition of the old center, engineering costs, those types of things. But those funds are earmarked in that way. The interim community center was a separate set of funds from the insurer and we are just resolving final costs with them and will recover those costs from the insurer. So separate from that $6 million, will not use that fund of money. There is also a set of money for business and property law, personal property loss. So items that were in the center were inventoried by the insurer and they've established an estimate of about $210,000. So as we replace things, as we've gotten into the new community center or even right after the fire, as staff were relocated here, those funds were used. They've been segregated and tracked so that we recover the maximum funding that we can recover from the insurance company in that area. There's another category we're calling extra expenses. And those are expenses that if there were not a fire, we would not need those costs. We would not need a project manager. We would not need fence rentals. We would not need porta potties up at Central Park. We would not be paying the schools for their facilities to use for summer camp and city programs. So those will also be recovered from the insurance company, again, a separate set of. of funds. And finally, the area that's still ongoing in negotiations is business interruption. And what this is, is the lost revenue to the city as we have not had that facility available to us. That lost revenue gets offset against expenses that we don't have. So for example, we weren't paying electric, an electric bill on the center. If we weren't having some of the facility uses, we weren't hiring part-time employees to work there, that type of thing. And, and those are the activities we're working on. There's a three-year period of loss for those, these two items on this page, the extra expenses and the business interruption. So in January of next year, we will no longer keep recovering them, so if we're still needing some of those costs, we, we would be responsible as the city for paying them. But we do have, and that's, this is why the primaries and the insurance is, is still open, both for us to continue to make sure we've gathered all the costs, and to continue to recover costs for that period of loss. We wanted to make sure that that was well-understood, and answer any questions about that, or any, anything else we can answer.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you for your presentation. One of the comments I would keep getting is that, "Why didn't we insure it for more than it was worth?"
I hope City Attorney can help me with that, but it isn't, it is not, to my understanding, it's not allowed to be insured for greater than its value. Our insurer does do actual property appraisals for us. We just had one last year on our properties. So we do, we do to the full value. We do get some additional value because they do help us with other expenses while we're away from our facility, but we've, we have, we did insure it to the value possible.
Ms. Schneider? Sorry, did legal counsel, excuse me, Ms. Schneider?
You will recall that we went through a process with the insurance carrier, and we even hired an expert, a building expert, and what they pay is replacement cost for what was a 1968, '69 building, to be replaced to code. But the materials, et cetera, were valued at what they were, and they were old. And we did get a, an expert to get us kind of a cost to replace, but we don't want what it was. We want, the community has spoken loud and clear. They would like something new, and state-of-the-art, and, you know, designed with the 21st century in mind. So $6.2 million will, will not get us that.
If I might interrupt before, can I? In addition to that, the previous building was for a much smaller population. So to rebuild what was previously there really is not appropriate for the current population. It would be shortchanging the current population to put up basically in a building that's not useful because it, yeah, it would be half the size of what's currently required, and I know that was some of the discussion. The benefit to the building that the public's been working on, the community's been working on as a whole, is that the building, hopefully we can get to at some point in time, will be more sustainable than the previous one. So it would cost less to operate. It would not only serve the current population and a future population, but also be less to operate and maintain, which is more, what they call sustainable, which is actually more fiscally responsible than what we previously had. So that's what's important as we move forward. My apologies, Ms. Schneider?
So many of the people have, the people, they have come to me and said, "Okay, what happens next?" Now, with the Brown Act, we can only talk, the five of us here at a council meeting, and I know that there's still the Subcommittee, but what is the plan to reach out, especially to the people who voted no, and find out what, why they voted no? I mean, I did my own thing on Nextdoor, and I've got five, or six, or seven, or eight different reasons that seem to come up fairly frequently, one of them being how angry the public is over the sewer and water rates. That had, it had nothing to do with the rec center, but it had to do, how are we managing the expenditure of, of city monies? So I'd just like to ask, as the Subcommittee goes forward, are you still going to keep this community stakeholders group? I was vocal, I haven't been vocal in the last year, of saying that as a council member, I felt like I had one of the last words to say in anything. Part of that is because of the Brown Act, the difficulty of getting, of being able to talk about details like this. But are we going to collect information for where we failed? How can we improve that? I know I've talked to interim city manager about trying to help the public understand, and this is off-topic, their water and sewer bills, and the fact that, yes, we have, as the video showed excellently, it's old. And like all of us that have to repair our house, we have to put that money in, and we haven't put that money in, and we're paying the price now. But how are we going to move together forward? And I just would like, I know you guys are going to sit down and figure that out, but when are you going to include the rest of council on this? Because I'm really curious. I mean, I know that there are some other options out there. I've already told the city manager, and I agree with the mayor, that a lot of Nextdoor discussion was, "Why don't we just shrink the building?" Well, the building was for 16,000 people. We're at 23,000, and should these projects ever break ground along El Camino or Bart, we're going to be at 28,000. And to build something that's already antiquated means that those people in the future will look back at this council and say, "You screwed up. You didn't build something big enough for us." So it's a rock and a hard place on that, but I just would like to know the process that we're going to use, how that we're going to be more responsive to the anger of the public, and try to put that anger aside so that we can collectively, as a community, move forward. That was kind of my preach there. Sorry about that.
Ms.-
So I think, Deanna, if you can go to the slide with the timeline, and that's a great question, and so-
I'm sorry, do we, do you want to continue with your, go ahead?
That was, that was the full presentation.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, sorry about that.
Well, so I, I think, you know, we, we've revised our timeline. We're going to get back together with the Subcommittee, evaluate and answer the, you know, obviously the questions that, that you have raised, and, and that we all have, and then move forward with the stakeholder group, and then bring back information to the full council in a study session, a joint study session with the City Council and the Park and Recreation Commission. And that will be late January, early February, hopefully late January.
Well, and I think Ms. Schneider's question is exceptionally valid here, is that I think we're going to take a look at the end result of the election to see who voted. We can't actually see how they voted, but we have an idea, but the demographics of who voted, try to analyze the aspects of all of that as we move forward here. We do have to remember, it was a short campaign by the time the city actually voted, and we had to get it on the ballot. So there wasn't a lot of time, as Ms. Schneider's pointed out, to educate the voters on all these aspects and the valid questions that she received and many of us received. We need to do a better job in messaging to the residents, the painful aspects of the water bills, the sewer bills, the reality of what's happening here. The consent decree being done away with is a wonderful thing and will help us in paying things forward here. I know it's frustrating with the Brown Act. We tried to have more, bringing this to the agenda items so that the rest of the council could speak, but that's not really sufficient with the frustration of the rest of the council here. So can we suggest that if council members have questions, like Ms. Schneider has here, that those go through the city manager and get addressed as quickly as possible, because we're all kind of hearing the same questions that she heard throughout this process, and it was frustrating for a lot of people? I think if we're able to get the public more informed about the entire process here, what we learned tonight from Ms. Hildebrandt is that part of that insurance policy, the ongoing insurance policy, will expire, because next year we'll hit three years. So because Measure II did not get its full sixty, two-thirds vote, 66.6, we are at 62 point something. So thank you to everyone who supported the measure and voted for it. That was one aspect of the funding. So I think moving forward, we will look at another element of the funding, which was the surplus property, and that will be the discussion for the entire council to look at. We have received not really a formal legal opinion, but I guess a legal opinion regarding one piece of property, which is Schultz Park, which may require voter approval to move forward. So I think we're looking at that, but I think we're looking for ideas from the entire council here, as to what they feel we can do moving forward. So can I go to-
Can I just build on one thing that-
Sure.
-that happened? My point is anger, as someone who did customer service at Hewlett-Packard for five years, when people are angry and you don't address it, it just grows. So you've got people now who have voted no, they were vocally voting no. If we can reach out to them right now and at least let them know that we've listened to them, and we want to hear their concerns, so that we can begin to put that together in some kind of question and answer, some kind of response on that. Rather, when you said February, it may not come back until February, that's, those people over December, over January, just percolating on that. And I would rather, let's get it out there as quickly as we can, even if it's not done in the most scientific fashion. Just collect the ideas, understand that, and let them know that we're listening to them. And, and with one other thing, I want to give a big shout-out to Christopher Del Negro, the Park and Recs Commissioner, who did a valiant effort on Nextdoor to try to bring people around to all the, the concerns and questions. And he is a volunteer. He doesn't even get the huge salary we get as a council member. You know, thank you, Chris, and to everybody else who worked on that, since I was only peripheral, but let's get that, let's recognize it now. Don't let it go a couple more months. It's already been a month, or what feels like a month.
I guess, I mean, we could, at the direction of the city council, have a town hall meeting and, and open it up, and guide that discussion, and get feedback from the community as we move forward. I just don't want to get ahead of the decision-making process on, on where do we go from here without actually having the benefit of the council.
Well, I see what Ms. Schneider's thought process is here, and I think a lot of it can be, I mean, part of the problem was, what's on the website is not really informational. And clearly, Dr. Del Negro could use a gold medal here for his responses on Nextdoor. I think if we actually got his permission to post some of those responses on the city website, it would answer a lot of the critics' questions, because he was very detailed, being the chair of the Park and Rec Commission, as to the process and what was happening throughout. And I think if we can get the various comments that Ms. Schneider heard, that Mr. Holliver and Ms. Aliva heard as they were going door-to-door, get them answered on the website before February, as we move forward here, then we can actually refer people to the correct information and not the social media frenzy that was occurring. Some people are going to vote no, no matter what, but if we can educate the public more so to the things you've heard, actually even heard tonight, would be very important, and kind of getting the accurate information out there, which is, I think the public will appreciate as we move forward in any direction. So, okay, I have hands everywhere. Who was first over here? Mr. Holliver?
So, yeah, I do appreciate that idea of looking backwards and seeing, you know, what happened. But if we look ahead, if, and I'm not saying that we need to, but if we needed to do some other type of, you know, revenue measure in the future, I believe the next available time would be November of 2020. Is that correct?
That is correct.
What about the special presidential primary?
Or June of 2020, or-
So if you want to go forward with a revenue measure, my understanding is you need a general municipal election, which happens every two years.
Okay.
Now, let me, let me-
Council race.
Yeah, now, if you go for a two-thirds vote bond again, perhaps you can have a special election. You know what? I wasn't pre, I need to refresh my recollection on the law there. So a two-thirds, you might be able to put on another election, but you have regular municipal elections for council members every two years. And I know that a general tax would have to go on a municipal election, general municipal election. Maybe a tax that requires a supermajority, a two-thirds, there may be an exception to the rule that that can go on another election. I will get back to you on that.
But I guess my other point is that if we are looking ahead to 2020, I think this $30 million budget no longer really applies. It's going to have to be probably more than that, if, if we're counting in, you know, a couple more years of escalation, unless the plans are revised. But I think that's an important thing to consider, that, you know, probably, probably a $12 million bond two years from now won't be enough to fill whatever gap is needed. Ideally, I think it would be nice if there were other options for funding available, and we're going to get, going on that. I know, I don't know if we've had any initial discussions with the county about potential funding, but I think they have shown, and with other communities, an ability to work with communities for at least a portion of, of funding for, for city projects. But, you know, I think the, the financial aspects of this have to be taken into account very seriously, because, you know, the, the more expensive a bond measure, a tax measure it is, the harder it is to be got approved, especially if it needs, you know, the two-thirds supermajority. So we really need to be taking that into consideration as we go ahead, go forward with this.
From legal counsel, we'll also need to know if there, we have to go to the voters regarding Schultz Park. I think we're going to need a public hearing on that-
Yep.
-as well as how, educating the public on how that would occur after hearing their responses.
So in past years, and I will resurrect this, in past years, we have done charts for the city to consider a whole slew of revenue mechanisms that are available to you. I mean, I, your business license tax, I don't think has been touched since the 90s. Is that possible? I think, if I recall, Lou might recall, I think it was in the 1990s when we went, that's a general tax, that would just be a majority. It, it's a hard tax because your commercial constituents don't like it. But TOT, you haven't touched TOT in a while, that's a general tax. I think Belmont and some other cities just increased their TOT, you know, and the idea is not too bad an idea to-
TOT oriented, that's a hotel-
The hotel tax, you know, it's okay to keep up with your neighbors in that area. You don't want to put your hotels at a disadvantage. But that is another revenue source that has always been sacred to Millbrae, and I don't think you've touched it. There, there are a lot of ideas, some of which are just a majority vote. The majority vote, I know for sure, would have to wait till 2020. Majority vote revenue measures would have to wait for your general election. But, you know, 2020 is around the corner. Time goes so quickly, and it really does take, I think, thought and kind of a deliberate process to work with the constituents of yours who are affected when you're thinking of proposing these kinds of measures. So you can't do anything of this kind overnight, in any event.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yeah, I just, thank you for bringing this up. When we did the fire assessment, I mean, it was, I mean, the laws have changed since then, because I know that wasn't, that was a special election.
Yeah, no, that was, that's an assessment, which is different than a tax. So assessment has its own rules, and that is a majority. And all property owners vote on that, that's a majority. And that, that can be conducted at any time, but your, your assessment is still in effect. It's in effect through 2024. There are other types of assessments. We've looked at those before. I don't think none is rel, readily applicable to Millbrae. Most assessments, very few assessments would go into the general fund. A lot of assessments are more improvement-related, capital project-related.
Wasn't this a capital improvement project, and this count as a capital improvement?
Yeah, but you have to have, each assessment has its own legislative underpinning and a particular purpose and mission. We can look at it. I have a- I have a list of assessments, we can look at that. I mean, there's lots of things you can look at and put together kind of a menu of possibilities. You don't have to have just a general obligation bond with a two-thirds vote. We all know that's hard. Under the best of circumstances, that's very hard.
Well, and let me just also say, thank Councilwoman Snyder for her remarks, and I do also kind of thank the mayor and the city managers for putting these meetings, informational meetings on the agendas, so then the rest of the council can weigh in more often than just the subcommittee. Well, the subcommittee is doing phenomenal work, you know, I think it's a good opportunity for us council members to weigh in, so I appreciate those, these, and I hope that we continue these types of meetings in next year.
Can I get Ms. Aliva, please?
I'm here.
Yeah, I see you. I was saying that.
Two things, two things that have been addressed, I was thinking as well, is number one is, we are probably, if we wait out the next two or three years, we're going to be up in price. So I was wondering if maybe we can get the city manager to get a speculation from Group Four to what that might be two years, what this was two years ago, we can kind of help with project, but it'll be in two years from now. And secondly, with regards to what our city attorney was just saying, could we get that in sync as well? Get that, the list of what, or the mapping of what we have, as soon as we can get our subcommittee together by that, that dealings in late January, or-
I'll update it.
And then that'll allow for them to, you know, present to us some, some ideas other than just the properties and such, or bond measure. Thank you.
And can I quickly add here? Is there any chance we would be entitled to the funds from the Victims Compensation Board? We were the victim of a crime, were we not? I wonder if cities have ever been able to claim anything under the Victims Compensation Board?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, it's a state board that victims can make claims on. I'm just wondering if a city has ever done so. It might be interesting. Please, I appreciate that. And then one of the, she said she'll look at it, it didn't come across that way. In addition to that, one of the questions that came up was, we all look at our tax bills, and we have bonds on there. So where are we on paying off the library bond, or any existing bonds on our tax bills? I think it's important for the public to know that. Are we close? I heard San Francisco can't put a new bond on unless they've paid off an old bond. So it's kind of like, the public just keeps paying for something new, they pay down and get rid of one, and then they bring on another one. I don't know if that's really true, but it sounded interesting. But I'm sure the residents would like to know. We don't want to keep adding to the list. If we can take something off the list, it would probably be helpful.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's presented in our CAFER, our consulted, our Conference of Financial Report. We can certainly bring forward an item to just talk more about them through, for example, the major budget. We could talk with you about that. We ourselves have one general obligation bond, which is a library bond. We have a certificate of participation, which is paid using general funds. That was used for the police station remodel several years ago. That is actually very close to being paid off. It is not on the property tax bill, but it is another, it's not a bond, it's a different type of financing, but it is another item. Sewer bonds are on your sewer and water bill, your utility bill. So we can certainly present to you what, what the city has out there in terms of bonds to share with you. Typically, they may change if, for example, there's a refunding opportunity and there's overall savings, but it might extend the timeline, but mean that you pay less annually. But we can, we can give you, we can just make that part of, for example, regular budget reporting.
Well, I know we refinanced on the library bond because the interest rates went down, but if given that lower interest rate, we can pay it off sooner, it might be helpful for the public to know that. Ms. Schneider, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Well, you, you brought up property tax. One of the comments that I heard from a lot of people, and sadly, the property tax bills dropped just as, almost the same time as the ballots dropped. And I heard from a number of, of people who've lived here a long time, so their actual amount that they would have paid was low, but they were just angry. They opened up that property tax bill and they saw all those items, and they've never really paid attention to them, and they've got lots of dot or point, blah, blah, zero, zero, one, one, one. They didn't understand all of that. So I think it's great to talk about paying things off earlier. The common thing that I heard is, well, we don't get a sense that the city has a plan on how we're going to pay for all of these things, including pension. And then council meeting two weeks ago, we did talk about pension. But I think, as a former teacher, we read the stuff, or you've got someone like Ruben who's gone to a master's degree program reading budgets, but the average person doesn't. And we need to simplify the information and present it in a way that makes sense, and, and get that information up on the website. That still won't get our, our seniors are not going to go to the website. So we're going to have to look at ways of bringing the public along and just understanding public finance. I mean, just the sheer fact, all of us knock on doors, and the first thing we get from the public is, how are you going to help the schools? Well, we're not schools, we're the city. So having them understand that the schools actually get more money out of sales tax or property tax than we do is something that most people don't understand. It's not like there's this huge well of money that comes to local government to run the city and to fix potholes, except if Measure W passes, but that's all going to manage lanes, isn't it?
It did. But can I, yeah, does, how is measure, how's that going to impact us?
Measure-
Measure W?
A half cent sales tax, a half, half cent sales-
So the sales tax will go up?
Sales tax will go up.
Okay, that wasn't us.
That's next July, next July 1st.
Next July 1st.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, so I think that that's, you know, kind of bringing that information down for those of us who have never really thought about how sales tax is divided up across all the entity.
Exactly. You know, I am a resident of the city of San Mateo, and they have always sent out a lot of information about the sale, the property tax. And I think it turns out that a city gets about 11 cents on the dollar. I mean, it's very, very low, and of course, people think that property tax goes-
16.
16? Yeah, it's very low. So this is good information for people to have, you know, and no one likes to pay taxes, but, but it does not return to the most local source. It traditionally did, and over the years, it's been eroded, and the states kept more and more of the property tax. And now, I think cities get about 16 cents on a dollar.
It's about 16 cents of a property tax dollar of the eight point, the eight cents, 8.75 cents of sales tax, we get a penny. We also do get a little flow-through of county sales tax measures associated to transportation, Measure A and Measure M, but it's, it's just a share.
And we need to be fighting now that Amazon, all those online purchases, that money is going to come back to the state, and we're going to have to fight as local government against the county and the state to get some of that money to us and not to the current formula that they're looking at, not basing, it should be based on, if we have no shops and everybody has to shop out of town, then, and they're buying everything on Amazon, then we should be getting a greater share. The last thing I wanted to say, when you mentioned that the sewer, there's a sewer tack, or a sewer thing as part of the property tax bill, a common thing that I heard from the seniors is, why can't I get my whole water or sewer bill on the property tax bill? And that they know friends in other cities that have it that way, so maybe we can, your water use component, I imagine, can't go on property tax, but there might be something there that we can shift. But that probably recall, requires a vote, doesn't it?
It's not, it's something that we're looking at procedurally to see timing of doing that.
Okay.
So we're not opposed to it, it's just a matter of-
I got that from a number of our older residents, I'd rather see it on my property tax bill.
You know, that's interesting, it's not deductible. Well, and of course, we now have tax reform, which really helps Californians.
Okay, we need to get back to the rec center here. One thing, if we're talking about revenue stream, because hopefully, improving the revenue stream to assist us in pursuing a recreation center here, too. We need to look at the cities around us here, many of whom passed cannabis laws, and that can be delivered within the city of Millbrae. So I think that's a point of purchase that we should be receiving sales tax on, too. It's not here in Millbrae, but you can, we can't ignore the fact, you can pick up your telephone and have it delivered to your house. So I don't know how we go about that, but somebody needs to look at that. So anyway, as far as the recreation center goes here, the vote as of today, yes, 5,392, which is 62.22 percent. No, 3,274, which was 37.76 percent. It's unclear whether there'll be an update at this point in time, but we did, yeah, we didn't really say final on there. I know, he, I know he said this was the last, it still says semi-official. I think they have a few days left to actually finalize the vote.
Yeah, it's not that much.
So, again, thank you to everyone who supported the measure and efforts. Thank you to some city staff, Deanna, Ms. Brady back there, Mr. Williams on their spare time, really came in and helped to try to educate the voters. Thank you so very much for putting your efforts into that. In addition to that, I do believe that the current proposal by Group Four is in terms of 2020 funding.
Correct.
So we are still actually on schedule with the $30 million price tag, no?
Well, that, through the chair, I believe that would assume that we, we get the funding by 2019 and break ground by 2019.
We go out to bid, yeah, that's correct.
So if we don't have the cash on hand, we can't go out to bid for a couple more years and, you know.
Well, in certain aspects, we may be able to bid out. I know it's proportional, but in order to stay within the budget, it's something we're all going to have to look at and ask Group Four to look at, too, so that you can't spend it all at once anyway, but if certain preliminary work can be done at current costs, it might be helpful. I don't know how that works, but, well, we do have some insurance money, so maybe we can take some preliminary steps on the insurance funding as we look into other funding aspects to bring about the reality of the project, which the community, the majority of the community has voted for. So, more than that, yeah. So again, I think tonight, we've really come together with getting the message out, answering the questions, as Ms. Schneider has presented, that we're on social media, and some of the answers are there. Thank you to Dr. Del Negro. And just building on that and making sure that the information stays current and accurate moving forward might be helpful.
Social media, how's that Brown Act work? Now that we're not in a campaign?
I'm not sure I understand.
So if you have a group and councils chiming in on something that would be agendaized the, in the near future, and we're not in a campaign, are we allowed to all speak on the subject in conversation together?
So you're talking like Next Door? Yeah, I, I think you've got to be really careful. I mean, what you have to be careful about, the council reaching or being perceived as reaching some kind of consensus.
Or seeking some consensus.
Or seeking some kind of consensus. So I think social media obviously offers all kinds of complications under the Brown Act. But are you kind of talking about Next Door, just participating on one of the many networks? Just be careful. You know, if you're offering up information, you know, as a council member, I mean, if, if someone-
An agendaized item anytime in the future, none of us should be proposing.
Well, you know, what I'm hearing is that people have questions. People have questions.
Informational questions have already been asked. I think that's what we were-
That's, I was thinking that if you are participating, just offering, you know, as a council member, I'm aware of, in the past, the city has done this. I mean, you're, that's not seeking a consensus or putting out a proposal, it's just offering information that you may have as an official, but, so I'm not, I guess I'm not sure how this would come up. If you're thinking to engage in a discussion as to what revenue measures you should pursue, I, I think you should try to leave that to a noticed meeting.
Or a polling?
Or a polling, yeah. But if you are sharing just information-
Well, I mean, I don't think council members should be seeking a poll on any social network if it's involving a topic like this, or anything that's going to be on the agenda. That's-
I think if there's a, if I may, if there's a request from that, it should be placed on the agenda, and my recommendation would be that the council discusses it, and the majority of the council decides to move forward with a survey, a poll, a response, or whatever it may be.
Well, I think the topic of discussion tonight was just getting information out there that came up previously to answer questions. So we need to make sure that our website regarding the recreation center answers all those questions, if anybody had frequently asked questions.
Social media provides a potential format for a serial meeting, and you just want to avoid that, is what I would recommend.
Isn't that more when you're expressing an opinion? It's what you said, Joan, if we're simply answering a question, it's a top material information already known, you're simply educating, although I would prefer it, and I'm a big Next Door user, I would prefer saying, go to this city website, and it's what I try to do.
I mean, my preference would be, if anybody has any questions out there, come to City Hall. I'm available, we've got department heads that are available. Call us, email us, we'll set up a meeting with you. Our door's always open. So instead of exacerbating false information on social media, because I think it's unfair for us to be on social media 24 hours, seven days a week and respond, I'm inviting the public to come to City Hall. We will set up a meeting, we'll set up town halls, we will answer any question, we will provide you with the information. We are open, we are open for those inquiries. So I put it out there, if, instead of having a meeting on Next Door at midnight or 1:00 in the morning, let's have a meeting together, face-to-face as a community, and we will answer those questions and be responsive.
Great.
And then they get to hear the, the real factual information from us at the city. So I, that, that's what I would propose, instead of trying to answer everybody's question on social media, which I think is unrealistic. I think it's part of what we need to do, of course, but I think it's, I, come to City Hall, call us, we will provide you with the information, we are open.
Email's probably the best.
Email, yes.
People work.
Absolutely.
Well, that's hard, too. Okay, so actually, what we do have as a result of this election is that the majority of the voters are in support of a recreation center, and we, as elected individuals, will do our best to pursue that goal and keep the public engaged throughout the entire process. So I believe we are all in agreement on that, and we will work towards that benefit because it is an important aspect. As we heard from our wonderful librarian today, certain community resources are very important to the community, and we do firmly believe that the recreation center is just one such resource. Okay, this was informational as well. Thank you very much, and we look forward to future updates. And I encourage the council and the community, if you have any ideas, email us, get the message out there. We are looking for not only miracles, but good ideas to make this a reality. Thank you, everyone, for all of your help and support throughout this process. Our next item is 14. New business, adopt a resolution appointing Thomas C., what's the C for?
Charles.
Charles Williams as the city manager and approving employee agreement. Is there any comments? No, I'm sorry, we have a motion in a second. Your votes, please?
Before you go, before you do that, so the, the law after the city of bell requires-
The infamous city of bell, yes.
Infamous city of bell, to ensure real transparency, which is why I removed this from the consent calendar. It does require that on the record, we outline the salient terms of the agreement that you are proposing- terms of the agreement that you are proposing to consider tonight for approval with Mr. Williams. So, let me just repeat orally the terms that we have outlined in your staff report.
Ms. Lewis is behind you. Is it you or Ms. Lewis that's to do that?
Either one. I just didn't want you voting before that happened.
Of course. We want to make the rec, we don't want to be the city of bell.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Just to go over a few of the, or the points here on the, in the agenda report, I will outline the terms and conditions of the employment agreement. So, the salary for the position is an annual salary of $250,000. This amount represents the same salary as the previous city manager.
Can we please note Mr. Williams' years of experience at this point in time, when you say that?
Yes, he does bring more than 30 years of public and private sector experience in all aspects of local government.
Thank you.
Moving on with the terms here, under vacation, he will accrue the same vacation and leave as all other exempt management employees. With regard to retirement, the city will enroll Mr. Williams in Cal-PERS, and he will receive the same benefits as all other exempt management employees. The city will also contribute $10,000 a year towards a deferred compensation plan and contribute to the plan within the limits set by state law, which is the same benefit as the previous city manager. Termination, Mr. Williams' employment will be at will and can be terminated at any time. In the event of a no cause termination, Mr. Williams will be entitled to eight months of severance. Performance evaluation, both the city and Mr. Williams agree to conduct a performance evaluation every 12 months. And the final point is, under health and welfare, Mr. Williams will be eligible for the same medical and all, and other health and welfare benefits as all of the exempt management employees. So these are the terms that are in the agreement that is before you this evening. The agreement has, outlines and expands more on each of these conditions, but these are the terms of Mr. Williams' employment agreement before you tonight for consideration.
I think we need to point out that Mr. Williams is coming in at a different PERS rate than the last city manager. Mr. Williams previously retired from his last position, so he will not be coming in at that rate, but the new PERS rate, which is a lesser.
Yes.
Under PEPRA. So, and we wanted to find PEPRA, we're talking about things the public doesn't understand, but it's the public employees.
Yeah, but it's the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, PEPRA.
So it is much.
It does reduce the contribution that the city pays toward employees that come in at that level, all new employees. And, so it is, it is a modified, more cost-effective plan for the public, and Mr. Williams will be a PEPRA retirement employee.
So, mayor, council, you have me until I'm 90.
How old are you now? No, can't ask that one. Can't ask that one.
Until I'm 90.
Forget it. We do appreciate all of your work, Mr. Williams, coming in and your desire to join us full-time, particularly as a Millbrae resident, and your involvement in the community, reaching out Measure II and other things. It's a wonderful and refreshing perspective for all of us, and getting the council to agree, to bring you in and keep you on here. The public response has been very, very supportive, because you have been very responsive. And what we have seen, I think, with your encouraging staff and empowering them to do their jobs, it seems like a much more pleasant place to work these days. We do hope that continues throughout. So, any other details we need to get on the record here? Ms. Schneider has made the motion. It's getting late, and the vice mayor has, Ms. Oliva has seconded. Any other comments?
I just wanted to just thank your service so far, and I've been very impressed. And most, many of the people I've been spoken to are very appreciative of you being out there in the community, and you already were a part of the community, but now that you're here in a more visible position, that we've gained really good comments, and I think that we are fortunate to have you here. So, thank you for agreeing to our terms, and thank you for applying and stepping into the position. So, I think, I look forward to working with you.
Schneider?
I'm going to do that. And to the public, since Tom has come on board in May, was it May? It's been really refreshing, and instead of how we can't do something, it's how we can do something. And you demonstrated it tonight by saying, "Public, if you've got issues and concerns, come to us." Another longtime complaint was, once we put the locks on the doors, which I actually agree with, I've worked in places where people come with guns, so I'm happy with locks on doors, but you've made an open-door policy, and I encourage the public that we're in a new time now, it's, we're coming into the new year, and I think you're going to see a lot of pretty amazing things start happening, which will help us all become a better community. So I welcome you, Tom, and I look forward to working with you.
Mayor, real quick, I would just like to say thank you to the council for believing in me and putting your faith and trust in my abilities to take Millbrae, you know, where it needs to go here in the future. I don't think people realize how complex and how busy this city is. We have, as we mentioned previously, we have some of the most complex land development projects that you will ever see in a community. And so, Millbrae is busy, open for business, and thank you for your faith and confidence. And it's a great management team, since I've been on board. I've been so pleasantly surprised with Deanna, and Key, and Angela, and McKenzie, and the entire management team. They're fantastic, and I really look forward to working with all of them and having great success. And again, working with Joan and Michael Conneran, it's been fantastic. So, great team, and I know that we can, can do great things and continue down that, down that path, especially with the leadership we have on the city council. So, thank you.
Well, and just one example of what the council can do when they come together. It is a great accomplishment having you here with us, and we look forward to working with you. We have a vote, so we're going to call for the question. Your votes, please, that means, if you haven't yet.
Item number 14 passed unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Williams. Welcome aboard. Okay, moving on to council comments. Vice Mayor Lee?
So, I'm a member of the Associate Mayor Government Executive Committee, which is the planning, regional planning board, and at that meeting, at the last meeting, they had presentation by a ad hoc committee that was formed by Metropolitan Transportation Commission and ABAG for the purpose of addressing the housing needs of the Bay Area. And this committee was made up primarily of housing advocates. It was pretty comprehensive, it wasn't perfect presentation, but it's, interesting enough, the commission and the ABAG doesn't have much of a say for this proposal, but they were allowed to weigh in. And one of the biggest issues is that we are noticing that a lot of pro-housing electives are being, are being replaced by people who are anti-housing. And we've also noticed that the, the great boom that we're having is, as a result of a lot of companies, they're not stepping up, and they're putting it on the backs of the taxpayers and the electors to solve this problem, and they're not really stepping up. We also recognize that each city has a different issue, and, and I represent the small cities on the, in the county, and the small cities have struggled, are struggling with the fact that we, if we build, we also have, we don't take the economic impact, because we recognize that the property taxes do not cover the cost of services that are required to provide a good quality of life for these new residents that we want, but, so we need to, all cities have to look into, not a one-size-fits-all, but how to analyze, correctly analyze, and provide for the services, and provide the economic ability. The other thing, too, is that the transit, you know, the sexy things to build housing around transit, well, we're not building them fast enough, and they're very expensive and slow. So, we also recognize that we really need to build transit out to where they're building houses, like out in the Central Valley. So, we really need to look just, not just, you know, outside, we need to look outside, not inside. In the Peninsula Clean Energy area, thank you, Councilwoman Schneider, for sitting in for me in the last meeting, meetings. I apologize for this last meeting was oversight on my part. But the, the last meeting, we had a vote on, interesting enough, we had to extend a contract, six-month contract with a solar panel provider that we contract, half a billion dollars a contract with them, and the reason why is because of the tariffs on solar panels. So, in precaution, they've asked for a six-month extension and, on the project on our part. And so, yeah, so, I mean, this, this tariffs are impacting us as a community, but the good news is, is that we are still providing 5% lower electricity rates than PG&E. We are one of the most solidly financially stable utility, public-private utility. Even though the PUC voted to have a, charge an opt-out fee for anybody getting out of PG&E, PG&E can charge an opt-out fee, we're still able to absorb that and keep the 5% discount in electricity rates. Let's see, I think those are the big issues, and I'll let my council members pull up. Thank you.
Mr. Holliver?
Okay, at the Parks and Rec Commission last week, it was a relatively short, pretty short meeting, but one thing you may have noticed, the gazebo is now in place at the corner of Poplar and Library Avenue by the Los Arenas Plaza. So thank you to the commission for being very persistent with that and getting that replaced and getting that moved. And I believe John Muniz, who was here earlier tonight, was, I believe, the first one who suggested locating it in that location. I remember him mentioning that last year at one of the mayor's civic coordinating council meetings, and bringing that forward to the commission. So thank you, John, for your persistence as well. There also was a brief discussion, not really a discussion, about adult soccer. One of the commissioners, Chair Kiefer, is interested in getting some type of, you know, league, probably would start pretty small together for adult soccer, and is working with staff on seeing how to make that happen. There also was a discussion about landscaping on Richmond Drive and some of the trees that were cut down by PG&E. Our staff is working with PG&E right now on a landscaping plan for that area, so we hope to get that going pretty quickly. At the Sister Cities meeting last night, there was a discussion about the group visit to Malta that is being planned for April 16th through the 26th. The estimated cost at this time is about $4,000 per person, and they're holding an informational meeting tomorrow evening with those interested in attending. I don't have the exact, Ms. Schneider, do you? 6:30 tomorrow evening at the Chukuti Room, Wednesday, the 28th. Also, there was, the Council General Vella from Malta was there, and he is trying to, and nothing is set yet at this time, but he is planning to meet with the ambassador and some other folks from Malta to try to bring a play, from a Maltese play, to Millbrae. And actually, it's a play in English, it's been very successful over there, but he is hoping to possibly bring it to the Mills High School Auditorium, probably in late March is the timeframe that we're looking at, but there'll be, if that moves ahead, I'm sure we'll have more information about that in the next couple of months. All right, thank you.
Ms. Oliva?
So, while I was, while I was traveling for the holiday, I actually didn't miss any of the meetings, but a few got moved up. Tomorrow, I'm going to meet with our city manager and senior advisory chair for self-help for the elderly, to see if we can get that program a little bit boost towards, in the right direction, and there's been a lot of outreach for people that were celebrating the success of it. And then I was going to ask the chief if we come up for one second, because I attended a very special event today, just by accident, I ran into our police chief, and we did, I was, I was attending for a new, a new sheriff in town that is very close to me, and I went to the pinning and the swearing-in, and the chief was there, and you were, I mean, Millbrae looked like superstars up there. So I was going to allow you to say, take it away from this and give a little update of what happened today, and with what the lieutenant, and of all things, was pinned today from Millbrae, and I don't want to take it away.
Today was a great day for the sheriff's office and a great day for the city of Millbrae. The sheriff promoted Rebecca Rosenblatt, formerly of the Millbrae Police Department, to the position of sheriff's lieutenant, which is a huge honor for her, was great for us. And we promoted two of our CSOs to the position of correctional officer, which is the next step up in their career, so they'll start working in jails. So they have recently left us. I interview someone tomorrow to replace one of them, and hopefully I'll have someone next week to interview to replace the second one, so we can get back to our strong parking enforcement. But it was a great day for us. It was a great, a number of folks who've worked here over the years were there to cheer on those guys, and it was, and Lieutenant Rosenblatt, and it was neat for all of us. And we really appreciate you being there for Deputy Baker.
I'm happy I stepped in. It was, Millbrae was in the house. I mean, the presence was very strong and lively, and thank you for being there.
You're welcome. We have a nice picture that I'll, kind of try to get up on share of social media.
I have it in my phone, in case you need it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, and congratulations, chief, recent bust of auto theft ring, so appreciate that. Ms. Schneider?
And before the chief leaves, just as an example of kind of the new Millbrae, we are having a meeting next week on bringing a bike rodeo back to Millbrae. We haven't had a bike rodeo since March of 2016, 17. So the chief has pulled together a great team, Dana Lujan, Principal Dana Lujan from Meadows will be there. There's been some changes in funding for bike rodeos. They're now concentrating them in low-income communities. So one of the areas we might be looking at is, instead of having it at Taylor, is potentially having it at Lumita Park, because that's our one area with that. And that means an opportunity to possibly also work with San Bruno on that one. But, thank you, chief, you just took the ball and ran with it, and it's really exciting, and I'm looking forward to that meeting. On Malta already, I think I've already told you that I'm hoping to do the Malta trip. I don't know if other council members are going, I'm just trying to save my pennies or dollars on that. I listened in to a sea-level rise workshop yesterday, it was prepped for a sea-level rise workshop tomorrow. What I did learn is that Millbrae has been created part of a subregion with San Bruno and Burlingame, because we have similar topography and similar infrastructure. And what that means is, in these, they've divided the county up into four, possibly five, sub-districts that will look at how to work on sea-level rise projects that are specific to those areas and those local conditions. And I'll have more to report on that after tomorrow's workshop. The Historical Society, they have a train station. Many of us probably don't realize, we have a historical train station, one of the last of the original train stations that still exist. It is just south of the Millbrae Overpass down on California Boulevard Inn. They didn't do it last year, but this year, from 10 to 2, they're having their Christmas fair. The Leos will be there helping to man cotton candy and cookies, and the kids get to come and play in the trains. So if your kids are around on Saturday, the good news is, I think, even if it's raining, you, there's an over, there's a roof over the train station, and you can go inside the car. So it will be happening, rain or shine. I wish John had stayed to give me an update, but our train station, and then there's the Christmas tree lighting. But our train station, and then there's the Christmas tree lighting, the bike rodeo, sea-level-rise. The other thing that I have heard, and I'm actually going to the county next week for a short presentation, Caltrain apparently has quite a bit of land. And Caltrain is trying to figure out what to do with some of their land. And a group of housing advocates will be making a presentation at the Board of Supervisors meeting next week to talk about housing at Caltrain land. And I'm not sure how much land Caltrain may have in Millbrae, but I'm just throwing that out there. I don't think any of it is destined for housing, but there is this movement to look at Caltrain land for housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Reiterating, we have the Christmas tree lighting this Saturday. Caltrain's holiday train is coming by on Sunday, which is all on the website here. There is a meeting Friday, San Mateo County Water Coordination Committee. What that is, is that the county is trying to get together to develop a JPA so that we can get federal funding. We have been at a disadvantage in that we have not been cohesive in our presentation. So, Congresswoman Spear, Supervisor Pine have taken the lead with several cities. So, we're looking to get buy-in from all the cities to develop a JPA so that we will be open for funding to deal with sea-level rising and a whole bunch of other aspects that all of the cities are approaching. So, that, for information's sake, Friday, November 30th, 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the San Mateo City Hall. In addition to that, I'll be working with MCTV. I know this is late, but there'll be a State of the City address on MCTV just to cover the accomplishments, the great accomplishments that the council and city staff have been able to achieve this year. So, Trent in the back's going, oh, no, here it comes. But it's important to keep the public informed along those lines as to what we've actually been able to accomplish this year. The vice mayor and I had an interesting meeting with the High-Speed Rail representative, the new gentleman, Boris, who has, what's his name?
Lifkov.
Lifkov, yes. He's got a lot of work ahead of him. And he has major issues to deal with, particularly in Millbrae, because as we went through the whole development process, we said, where is high-speed rail? So, by law, Millbrae is a high-speed rail stop. And what's going to be interesting is the governor-elect has made the San Francisco to, what, Stockton or something?
Fresno.
To Fresno, a priority. Well, surprise, surprise. It's going to be interesting to all of us to see where that one goes. My advice to Boris was to become very good friends with Elon Musk because a tunnel might be the only way that's going to happen. I am proud to say that we, my discussions with BART and SFO, we will be improving the connection between our BART station and the airport to a regular half-an-hour interim come February. Another issue we're dealing with is the forcing homeless people off the trains and into Millbrae at night. So, we'll have to be dealing with San Francisco. Our sheriff's department is working with the BART police. The increase in drug needles is not acceptable in any way, shape, or form. The individuals on these trains would love to go back to San Francisco, and we'd like to send them there. So, we'll be working, as the airport is, with San Francisco and BART to make sure those people get home and not forced off the trains into our community. So, we have some work to do there. Some of you got this in the mail from the South Francisco scavengers. This is for batteries, cell phones, and all of that. You should wrap old cell phones in paper, batteries, and whatever. This goes on top of your trash containers. They will then be recycled. Batteries can be exceptionally toxic and dangerous, battery acid, all kinds of things. So, please, explosions as well. So, they're making a concerted effort here. Also, I believe this is, is this light bulbs as well? We can read the handout here that came in your most recent mailing from the South City scavengers. We appreciate their efforts on staying on top of all of that. Again, I encourage, we've accomplished a lot this year working together, and I hope that we can do so moving forward here because that's what's to the benefit of the entire city. We will close in memory of Robert Lee Peakler. He died suddenly Thanksgiving morning. He's the father of Millbrae resident Brian Peakler. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. It's always a tragic loss. And happy holidays, everyone. We will see you at the next meeting. Thank you. Good night. Drive safely.